Winchester Facts. Separating fact from fantasy in our town's government.
Good evening and welcome to Winchester Facts. I'm your host Jerry Martinez and always on my right side Mickey Hamm. We're joined tonight by two exceptional people who are running for the Board of Education in municipal election this fall on November 3rd. We have John Pollack, closest to Mick, and Liz O'Dowd, who's at the far end. We'll get to learn more about them and what their ideas they have for the town and how we move the Board of Education forward. But first, I want to touch base with Mick. A lot of action been going on in the Republican Town Committee in the past month or so.
And in the selectmen's meeting last evening, I guess.
In the selectmen's meeting. So you want to talk a little bit about that before we get rolling with the Board of Ed candidates?
Well, you know, people may say that perhaps I'm not looking at this in the proper perspective, but I believe I am. And I was really taken back a bit by the last meeting because Republican selectmen suggested some folks for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And they were turned back by the Democratic faction. And there's three open seats there right now. As you know, you serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was really taken back by that and saying, because those folks, one is unaffiliated.
Right.
One I know is a Republican because they served with him. And the other I'm not sure about. So I'm like, why would you do this? I mean, plus you've got two folks that I personally know there that are very well qualified for the job, served on prior boards and commissions in the community, have a specific interest and a drive to bring more revenue to our community. And the only fact, part of this that I could get out of the whole thing last night was, it's not their way. So it's not going to happen. They fought it off. But I think, when Jorge shows up for the next meeting, I think they're going to be told and found out that it is going to happen. And that they're going to bring some good people forward onto this commission instead of making a hurrah out of it last night, like we were trying to do something sneaky and deliberate. It's not the case. They brought some people forward because there was a need to bring those people forward. The Democratic faction on that board didn't, didn't and hasn't brought anyone forward in the last two years. We brought you forward for a seat on that committee a year ago. And have looked diligently to find some more candidates to fill those slots. And actually had two of those folks volunteer strategically to say, you know, we really, we really want to do this job and we really want to see the town of Winchester succeed and survive. So I think, I was dismayed by the actions that took place there last night and people being discriminatory against people who really want to serve. And that really upset me because it's, it's not the way the democratic society should survive.
Well, it's really endemic with a lot of the commissions in town is that we are unable to fill a lot of these positions, even the alternates. I mean, let alone just the core people who are on the commissions, but try to get people who want to sit as alternates.
Exactly.
And I know from experience being on the Planning and Zoning Board that we haven't had alternates. We're supposed to have three. And specifically this past meeting, there were only three of us there. You need three to make a quorum. And basically, we all had to be there. Otherwise, you know, we wouldn't hear the various zoning requests coming before the Board. So it's a critical thing. It's not just a question of politics here. It's a question of, you know, people are coming to the town. There's businesses, there's homeowners, there's people who have business before the zoning Board and they, there's a certain timeframe. You know, there's a certain time that they have to submit their application.
I agree Jerry. And that kind of an attitude-
And just to get this all tied up in politics is unbelievable.
But that kind of an attitude from the other side of the table makes other people who want to serve on commissions not want to serve anymore because they look at it and say, I'm going to get chased out before I get in.
Yeah, there's a toxicity that exists that permeates this entire town.
And, and they're the ones creating that toxicity, but want to always blame it on us.
Right. I don't know why that is.
I have no idea myself.
Well-
But I think we'll see success in this. And I know that Glenn, he likes, he tends to take some things personally. And he took this personally last night, which I think he was astounded and surprised by the whole-
As we all were.
-attitude of it all. And, and these guys are the ones that always say, oh, you know, we want to work together. We want to work together. Well, why did you stop us working together?
Right. Just for political reasons.
Yeah. So with that said, I think we'll probably go on to another subject for this evening.
Sounds good.
Unless a caller later on wants to discuss a little bit more of it.
Which brings up a good point Mick. We're going to open up the phone lines about halfway through, probably around, Chris will open up around 8 o'clock, if that's okay with you. And anybody who has a call or a question for any, any of the candidates or for Mick or myself will be happy to answer that. So I think we'll get right into it in talking with our two Board of Ed candidates. I've had the pleasure of meeting both of these candidates. I've known John for a couple of years now through St. Joseph's Church and met Liz at our Donut Social back in October, our first quasi-get-together. So I've gotten to know both of them very well and I think we're in store for a really interesting discussion tonight.
But perhaps maybe the folks out there should get to know John and Liz a little bit better.
I think so.
Maybe give them a little time to explain their past histories and their reasons for wanting to serve on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mike. I've lived in Winston since 1995 and I've been here for 20 years. And the problem is, when I first moved into Winston, it was a very nice town. The roads were in pretty good shape. The taxes were low. And now things have drastically changed. The taxes seem to go up every year. And the other problem is, one of the reasons it goes up every year is because of the education requirements. And my other background history is, which I'll expand on, expand on a little bit later is, I have a degree in accounting. I've worked as an accountant for over 30-plus years. And I worked with various different types of businesses, dealt with numerous CPAs, attorneys, tax attorneys. And I have a pretty good financial background history. And this is one of the reasons I want to run for the Board of Ed, is to try to strain out the mess that we have here and to make the system flow the way that it should flow and to bring the cost down per student also, which I'll discuss later.
Thanks, John. Liz?
You're welcome.
I came to Winston in 2008. So I guess I could be considered a newcomer. I am a stay-at-home mom and a taxpayer. And I really like our little town of Winston. And I'm running for the Board of Ed because of the mess that I saw that the schools were in. I went to some Board of Ed meetings and I saw different body languages and different Snickers and different looks. And you read in the papers about how politics is played in this town. And it, it makes me sad because these kids deserve so much more. And I'm in this for the kids. It's not politics. I wish politics could be completely taken out of the Board of Ed, but albeit, politics is in everything. My background professionally, I was in banking, on bank floors. I was doing operations. I'm known to ask the tough questions and the unpopular questions. And I kind of don't stop until I get an answer. So it's like, I'll keep asking and asking and asking until I get an answer. And I just, like, you know, like I said, I'm not working now, but I think my years and I was able to have very diverse background with my clientele. I've dealt with the rich and the rich and I've dealt with the dirt poor. So I have been very lucky to deal with all different social and economic groups of people. So I'd like to bring that and my experience and my knowledge. And when I find the answers, I want to share them. You may not like the answers, but they'll be the truth. And that's all, that's all I got to give.
Well, I think that's more than we've been getting for quite a while. So I think that's a positive step. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. One of the things that both of you indicated was that the mess that you've seen taking place in our educational system, especially on the Board of Education. Now that we have our receiver in place, a number of his staff and people that have been appointed to take the places of new principals and vice principals and special ed people. I know you've been keeping in touch with this, both of you. Perhaps you could describe a little bit more in detail, either one of you, the incompetencies of the present Board of Education and why you've been so inspired to come here tonight to talk about it and so inspired to take the diligence of running for the Board of Education?
One of the biggest wow factors, I guess, that left me speechless, which if you, if you know me, which is hard to do, left me speechless was, I was at a Board of Ed meeting and, you know, a couple of meetings and it comes that they haven't had line item budgets for a while. And everybody was focused on budget, budget, budget. And that's fine, but a budget is only as good as you follow it. Your own household, you can make a budget, but if you spend too much money over down in Coles, you're going to have a problem something, you know, somewhere else. So the lack of a line item budget and the, this controversy or this mess, for lack of a better term, over the missing money for, you know, the special ed program, you know, the grant money. And it was like, I think her name is Nancy O'Day. I'm not really familiar with all of the, all the names yet, but she was trying to recreate expenses at one of the last meetings I was at. It was like late, late spring, summer, I think it was. She's trying to recreate. There's missing receipts. And the questions aren't answered. You know, where was the money spent? And then it was like, somebody on the Board of Ed got very agitated and was like, well, that's because of privacy. They can put their business all over Facebook, but we're not allowed to know anything. Okay, well, yes and no. Okay? HIPAA is a medical thing. Okay? If you want to know where your special ed dollars are being spent, you can, you can detact, you can take information out. You can take out children's names. You can take out any identifying information. This amount of money went to this company for this service.
Creating a spreadsheet.
It's an invoice. It's a bill. You get a bill, you pay it.
And a paper trail.
We can't know this. We can't know that X company charged Winchester X dollars for Y service. One plus one equals two. Always has, always will. So-
Depends on how you spin that.
Well, you can, I guess, but... And it's like, I don't want to say like, you know, it's not so much intentional, I think. I don't think anybody intentionally decided to destroy the schools. You know, I just think that there's too much personality, too much ego, too much anger, too much politics, too much incompetence, and, and people not knowing what they're doing. You know, they just don't know or don't care.
So where do you, where do you see the new receiver now and his duties? And I just touched on him briefly because I want to let you guys talk about it.
Now that the receiver is here, I would love to be able to work with him and his staff. He's got financial people. He's got, you know, the new special ed director. Yeah, I forget her name too. I'm really sorry. I'm really bad with names. But that, you know, she's in place. And I know he's like extremely busy now. You know, they got Gilbert negotiations. They got all kinds of stuff going on. But I have faith in him that he's going to find out what it costs to run the district. I want to be a part of that. I really want to be able to help with my, I'm not a CPA and I'm not a technical, I'm not technically an auditor. I have no degree or anything like that. My knowledge and everything is from the ground up. I worked up. But I used to do bank audits internally before FDIC came, before John would come to my bank and run an audit. I, I never failed an audit and I was sent to other banks because I find the details. They just, I just find things. So working with professionals and what I've heard about the new receiver, Mr. Travaglini, I think is how you pronounce his name. He's an educator and he cares about kids. You can't get better than that. You can't get better than an actual teacher who gets down in the dirt and cares about kids.
Well, his past experiences in Hartford District too, he encountered the financial aspects of that. And maybe, John, you want to touch on some of that?
Yeah, like Liz was saying, working with the receiver, I think is one of the most important things. And what I would like to ask him is to bring us around to get a list of all the schools that are in question, like Pearson, Hinsdale and Bachelor. Get a tour of the schools. I would love to talk to some of the teachers, talk to some of the students and find out what he's planning to do and how we could help him do what he wants to do to get the school back, back to where it belongs. One of the big problems is, the cost of education per student in Winston is close to $15,000 per student. And if you go to Torrington, which is a similar town, it is a little bit bigger in population, the cost is only $8,000 per student. That's a $7,000 difference per student. And it's hard to believe that it's almost twice the amount. And there's a problem here. 10 years ago, when we first started, or when I, when I first moved here and became interested in the budget, maybe 10 years ago, the reason was the taxes kept increasing. And the number one reason is the cost of education. 70% of our budget, 70% or more goes for education. And in the town of Winston, 10 years ago, we had like 600 students in these three schools, Bachelor, Hinsdale and Pearson. Today, we only have around 300 students. That's half the amount. Yet the budget keeps going up every year. The Democrats keep asking for more and more money for the Board of Education. It wouldn't be a bad idea if the money was spent and if the students got a halfway decent education. I'm not saying that they're not getting it, but the test results show that the students in Winston end up in the lower 30% quartile compared to other students from the state of Connecticut. So if we compare different towns in the state of Connecticut, Winston is in the 30% bracket, which is below 50%, it's below 40%. It's a shame, especially with all the money we're spending on them.
Agreed Jerry. You got anything? I don't want to seem like I'm taking over the program.
No, no, that was good. Because I was really excited about this program because I knew we were going to have two people here that we could really get in and have a good discussion about this. You know, one of the, one of the problems that we ran into this past year with this whole business with the, the missing dollars, you know, everybody's well aware of that. And that basically brought everything to a head in town as far as I'm concerned, outside of the, trying to move that, some of the students out of district. You know, we were trying to go to Torrington and to Canton and some of those. Now I understand why, because it was a cheaper play to go to these other towns. One of the problems was that, you know, it was only for the high school kids per se, but the kids in the elementary schools in the district were sort of stuck here with the, with the same systems. I'm just wondering, you know, what are your thoughts on the, the missing dollars? Any ideas where, where that went to or what, what do you see that as figuring into the future? I mean, you're going to be responsible for the future not to have missing dollars. So I think, I think it's incumbent on our candidates to basically pledge that, you know, we're not going to have missing dollars. We're, as Liz said, we're going to have a line item, which we're actually going to be able to track. And there's going to be a money trail and we'll be able to follow it, that anybody be able to follow. So I just want to get your thoughts on, on that aspect of the Board of Ed.
I think one of the thoughts that we had on this before, and I'm just going to carry on from there, was that in this, special education was where the problem of the missing dollars came from. And we had a discussion, I know John and I did, and I believe you were part of that discussion, Liz, of how can we keep track of that? Because each special education kid, his, his name cannot be mentioned in the privacy acts of education.
Right.
So we all agreed that it seemed awfully simple if you created a spreadsheet and identified student Johnny by Johnny ABC or Johnny XYZ and go right down the list. So each line item of that special education budget would be dealt with each individual student. Unfortunately, because of the privacy acts, we'd have to create him almost as a number. But it would solve the problem in keeping track of the special expenses that those special needs kids have. And each one could be identified because, as Jerry knows, there's a, there's a timeline, a dollar line of expenditure for each student. And once that's reached, then the state must participate in their behalf. And as John has mentioned, reducing the cost per student of Board of Education would also reduce that dollar line of where those expenses kick in and where they kick out.
Sort of like you're deductible in a healthcare plan.
Well-
Do you agree with that?
I do. Where did the money go? We could speculate forever and-
I think it's, we're bad looking at the past myself.
We don't know. I don't know where that money went. That money's gone. But looking, going forward, like Mr. Travaglini is now the superintendent and he's got the duties of the superintendent and the Board of Ed. Even though we still have an existing Board of Ed, you know, he has those duties. He has the new pupil services person who is, you know, going to deal, you know, is all the special ed. So first and foremost, you have to make sure that services you're paying for, children are receiving.
Exactly.
So if you're saying student Y is getting four days a week of whatever therapy, you don't have to tell me who that student is or where that, you know, what, what he's getting, you know, other than just, you know, a broad umbrella. Make sure that child is receiving those benefits. That's step one. Make, you know, without, with, without invoices and without a line item, how do you know these kids are receiving these services?
Exactly.
I'm not involved with the parents. I don't know what kids are or aren't getting. I'm not saying they're not getting services. I'm not saying they are. But for me, it's a simple math equation. You have this, you have this, it equals this. It has to.
Right.
This side has to equal that side. If you're an accountant, it's debits and credits, they have no value. If you're a banker, debits and credits have a value. A debit is a minus, a credit is a plus.
It's pretty simple stuff.
It's very simple. When the numbers get bigger, it gets more, I've dealt with millions and millions and millions of dollars. And I've dealt with my household budget. I work it the same.
John, how would you characterize that? And maybe how would you, would you, is my thinking part of your equation or am I absolutely wrong?
No, you're not absolutely wrong at all, Mike. What I'm concerned about is the $721,000. It seems to me it's almost like the same thing that happened when we had the controller, Mr. Centrella. The money disappeared, $7 million or so disappeared over a 10-year period. And right now, we're in the hole, $221,000 and no one seems to know where that money is. It's very difficult for me to believe that there's no internal controls on the system. No one's watching where the money is spent. And the Board of Education is doing a very poor job. And this is the reason I'm running, because I would like to get on the Board of Education. And I know I could do better than the people that we have there now. The Board of Education was, has been controlled mainly by the Democrats over the past, probably 10 years also. And it started off when Candy Perez and Karen Welcome were mayor. And then the Board was controlled by the Democrats and this is the result after 10 years. We have the state of Connecticut coming in here, trying to help us clean up the problems, put the school board back to where it belongs. And this is a first, a first for Winston. We have the receiver here, Robert Trelevini. And I'm happy that we have him here and hopefully he's going to try to get us on the right path. I understand he's going to be here for two years. So if he's going to be here for two years, you could just imagine how long it's going to take him to straighten this mess out. And we just can't keep going like this. It's ridiculous. And that's, that's all I can tell you at this point, Mike and Jerry.
So your accounting practices, you'd be, you'd be right there, willing to help Mr. Travaglini?
Yes, that's correct.
And getting what he needs and helping him disseminate disinformation.
Right. And then to be on the new Board of Ed, at least I have a pretty good background and so does Liz. And this is what we're looking for. We're looking for the future here. To do well for the students and the faculty and especially do well for the town. And the money that we save, say for example, in taxes, obviously we could spend, the two places I would like to see would be the roads and possibly the police department. The police department really needs to be updated. I've spoken to the chief, Mr. Fitzgerald, and he's waiting to get some money. And hopefully if we balance their budget and find out how we could save money from the school system, maybe we'll be able to give him some and things will be better for him also.
You know, one of the things that Mayor Bouchard keeps on bringing up is the fact that we need to have a shared accounting system. I mean, one of the things, when you really get down to it, we can't get to the data. And everybody knows and Mickey will back you up. I'm a big data guy and I want the data to be free. And so, free meaning, you know, easily accessible. And I think that's been one of the biggest problems is that the, the Board of Ed consistently, you have to get a freedom of information request just to find out what they're doing. And so I'm asking our candidates here, you know, do you support having a shared accounting system? And, you know, how would that help with basically getting a handle on our finances?
Well, just for me to interrupt a bit and not to take the limelight from you guys for sure, but because Liz is probably a little newer to the community, when I served from 2007 to 2009 as selectman, that issue was on the top of our list and as well as closing a school. But the combined information for the Board of Education to the Board of Finance for the town, that was all budgeted and ready to go and in place. Not in place as far as physically in place, but ready to be interjected into the town of Winchester's Board of Education and its Board of Finance. When I left office in 2009, all of those plans that were developed in my two years as Board, on the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, were just essentially tossed. They were tossed, including the financial aspects of the two Board of Finances, from Board of Ed to the, to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. And as well as closing a school. All that was tossed. And there was a lot of hard work put into it by a Republican majority at the time from 2007 to 2009 to develop those plans, to get conceptual approvals from the state, to bring a Board of Education on a local level into the realm of wanting to do those things. And it was like somebody turned off the switch when I left office on November 5th. Immediately came in and changed the roadmap. And so it's, since 2009 and 2007, when we started developing those plans, it's just appalling to see what the opposite side of the table has done to stonewall those things and to get them off the table. And I look at it and I say, why? What good has this done our community? And we have living proof of that now. We have a receiver running our schools.
Yeah. It's not anything to be proud of.
Oh, no.
You know, I mean, the, the state coming in was not a magic wand. Our problems aren't going to just be gone because the state is here. You know, I'm not happy-
Our problems were so significant that they were made law.
I mean-
In the last session.
I'm, I'm not happy. I'm not proud. I'm kind of a little embarrassed that we couldn't handle our own school district. The state had to come in and take it away from us.
Especially with only 1,200 kids total in this district. I mean, it's not like it's rocket science.
The state's here now. Okay, so now the state's going to do their job and they're going to help us. So why people would not want everybody to have the same information? I don't know. It breeds mistrust.
Contempt.
I don't want to say who did what because I don't know. I'd like to know, but I don't think I ever will. Knowledge and information is power. I love to know stuff. And when I know stuff, I can't wait to tell somebody else. That's exactly what I want to do. I want to know what's being said, what's being done, where's the money going? If you share information, you're going to be trusted. Get, when you have to file FOIA requests to, for the most simple information, what are you supposed to think? The last thing, the last thing.
Even Boardman was like Ray Rubago. He was even on the, on the- He was even on the Board of Education. He had to file his own Freedom of Information just to find out what the heck was going on with his own board.
And he was on the board, you know.
I mean, that's on the level we've gotten to in this town.
Sounds a little corrupt, doesn't it? There's a word corruption entering in.
It sort of comes in there, but I didn't wanna say it.
I just sit there and I shake my head.
I can see.
Guys, these are our kids. You know, I'll fight to the death for my child. I'd love to be able to do the same for all of your kids too. You know, my son is safe as far as I'm concerned. He's out of Winchester. He's in eighth grade over at Gilbert. He's safe. Next year, he goes to high school. My little granddaughter is in Bachelor, in the pre-K program. I have neighbors whose kids are in Bachelor, Hinsdale, Pearson. I can't turn my back on these kids. I wanna fight for all these kids.
God bless you for that.
You know, and these people who don't wanna share information, okay, maybe their kids are grown, but they've gotta have grandchildren somewhere. They have kids, even if they don't live here, you know.
So I suppose what I'm, I suppose what I'm trying to say is, we're recognizing the past as failure.
Super failure.
Super failure.
I like to call it epic failure.
That's epic fail.
Epic fail.
Yeah, it was an epic fail.
And I think the folks that are watching this program this evening certainly don't wanna see that continue. And I think you guys don't wanna see that continue. I think, John, your reputation, I personally have known John, John, I went to high school together. We're both kinda old, I guess, huh? But anyways, John took on a career of economics.
Yes.
Worked for the IRS for 34 years.
Right, that's true.
So if anybody knows how to do an audit, I know his, John and his brother Frank are professionals. But with that said, I think we have to look forward and we have to look into the future as you guys are. We're brushing on the past and we know that the past was an epic failure. And we're gonna look to the future. And I think you guys are looking to let, put out your hand to Mr. Travaglini and say, we're here for you. We're here to help you. As I think I am, and I think Jerry is, and I think.
The entire Republican team.
And, and I think the entire community is here for that. Sometimes our community becomes a little disorganized on how they achieve that. But I think with you guys as members of the Board of Education, I think you will bring that forward and make people understand.
I mean, one of the things for me, and I've said this at several of the selectman meetings, is that when we fail the kids like this, when you have the epic fail, we are destroying their futures. I mean, Gilbert's on a path right now where it's trying to achieve an excellent state level of education.
Right.
They're bringing in the foreign students from China and from other countries. So they have to maintain a certain level of educational excellence. And if we had kept on going the way we were with our students being the low percentile, which basically that puts us in with New Haven, Bridgeport, Waterbury, some of the bigger cities.
Bigger cities, right.
For only about 600 kids. I mean, each year, the student stays in the district school. We're basically destroying their future. Literally taking away opportunity for those students. So the fact that we finally, the state finally realized that something had to be done and we had to take control of the situation, at least we're saving the futures of a lot of those kids that are there. I mean, I liken it to institutionalized child abuse. I mean, it really was child abuse. While the Board of Ed was mucking around and doing all their machinations, the kids are still in the school system. And they're going day by day, suffering as a result of the inability of the Board of Ed to basically execute. It's criminal as far as I'm concerned. It's not even just corrupt. It's criminal because these kids are never gonna get those days back. They're never gonna get the years back that the Board of Ed was just, you know, screwing around here.
The current Board of Ed hired our previous superintendent, who I believe has been placed on leave. Okay? She was the boss of our teachers. I think our teachers work very hard. I think most of our teachers care about these kids. Especially, you know, especially the little, little ones. I mean, they hug the kids, you know, you see it. When I pick up my little granddaughter, you know, she hugs her goodbye. She, "I love you, Ms. Ames," you know. So the teachers are also stuck in this.
Right.
Because their boss is telling them what to do. It's very easy to say, oh, well, you care about kids? Well, why don't you say something? Well, you know what? They care about their kids too and they need their paycheck. That might sound like a cop-out, but in a way, not so much.
It's a precarious position they get put, they were put in.
They really are. And they're being told by their boss what they need to do. Now, I was at a parent ambassador meeting at Gilbert last night. And Alan Strauss and Sue Soika have actually been meeting with other teachers and principals at the other schools, which was, I guess, basically unheard of previous. So already with Mr. Travaglini here and, you know, because we, we're a K.
They're building that foundation.
Our Board of Ed is K, you know, our Board of Ed is doing K to six. Gilbert has a separate curriculum and everything else. You know, they're doing seven to 12. All those inter workings and stuff, I'll leave that to them. They know that better than I do. But our sixth graders are going to seventh grade. Let's make that a nice smooth transition. Let's have everybody on the same page. Let's not be at each other's throats.
Let them be prepared.
Yeah. You're telling me you love these kids? Show me you love these kids. Let's do what's best for them.
And again, touching on the past, which we don't wanna too much, but I think there was a sigh of relief with the teachers when Mr. Travaglini showed up because he met with them and made them all understand that he's there for them as well as he is for the children. He opened a whole lot of doors for a whole lot of relationships within our school system very quickly on his arrival. I give the guy the utmost applause and I think just like this because he's done an awful lot in the short time he's been here. He, you know, was a little like, where is he when they said he was coming? But he didn't have to be here to August 1st. And he physically was. But the preparation with the Commissioner of Education, he and his short staff that he brought with him was tremendous. Tremendous amount of getting to know people. And it's funny how he has gotten to know people. I mean, Ray Rubego, former Board of Ed member, met with Mr. Travaglini, called him up, said, geez, could I come and sit with you and just chat? Sure, come on up. Mr. Travaglini knew everything about Raymond. All his past history, all about Ray, his education, everything. So he's taken the time, as he's taken the time with some of the special education people knocking on doors. And some people were surprised by that. I thought that's, there's no better way in the world than to get to know somebody than to go introduce yourself to them. Have a conversation.
Yeah. You know, it's like you wanna know something, you wanna know something about somebody, ask a question.
So I applaud the man for his efforts. I applaud for what his efforts have been so far. I can see a distinct difference even in the attitudes of the teachers in our community. But Johnny, one thing that we did touch, you touched on it. And I'm interested in the numbers that you, because you're the numbers guy, John. I know you are.
Yes.
And I know our costs of education are up to $15,000 per student. I know what they were when I was in office and it was a whole lot less. It was around $11,000 and change.
Right. It still is kinda high.
Yes.
Compared to today.
And you look at Torrington, it's $7,000 per student.
Yeah, around $8,000, $7,000.
What do you think exacerbates that for Winchester school system? What exacerbates it from $7,000 in Torrington? Obviously, they have more kids.
Give about 7,000 students compared to.
Our 1,200.
Right. Right. With the 1,200, we should probably maybe explain the different schools. How many schools there in the district? There's the Gilbert and there's the Bachelor, there's Hinsdale and there's Pearson.
That's four schools for 1,200 kids.
Right. And then we also have St. Anthony's up in Winston, which is not affiliated. Okay, but the big, the big thing is, just looking at some of the information I gathered is, and from what I was told, a lot of the schools have empty classrooms. And that's one of the reasons I would like to get a tour and speak again with the staff, teachers and the administrators, visit the students and find out why some of the schools are possibly, I've heard rumored, which I think is pretty much correct, that some of the schools, half the rooms are empty. And if this is the case, we should consider the three schools that are on the list here, Bachelor, Hinsdale and Pearson, and possibly combining them and closing one of them for some kind of a tax savings, Mike. If you have, the student population has dropped 50% over the past 10 years. It doesn't make sense to keep three schools going if you could combine them and combine them in two and then possibly sell one of them if that's possible or get rid of it some other way. And then use the money as a tax savings for the town. Or if we do sell it, use it and apply the money towards the budget and spend it on something else, possibly fixing the roads or, like I mentioned before, directing it to the police department. I know from just driving down here, there's a couple of bridges, small bridges. They've been under repair for two or three years. It's absolutely ridiculous. And during the winter time, the roads are done pretty well by the street department. But since there's no money to really pay them and take care of them or maintain them, we're gonna have one heck of a bill in the future if nothing gets done on them. And according to the chief, Mr. William Fitzgerald, I was surprised. He mentioned that there's 88 miles of road in Winston. Could you imagine how long that is and how much asshole it would take just to patch some of these roads? It's unbelievable. We just can't keep spending all of our money on the school board and have all these schools open if we don't have the students. Something should be considered and thought hard in the next coming election.
I find it interesting, Johnny, you're touching on consolidation of schools. Because in my administration on the Finance Board in 2007 to 2009, it was one of those issues that got tossed when we left office.
It's unbelievable.
And it was conceptually approved by the State Board of Education. It was pretty much a done deal and conceptually approved with the local Board of Education and the local superintendent at the time. It was a matter of moving it forward, getting it off the dime and going forward. So there's six years that have been lost in the process.
Right.
And six years of consolidating more issues in that. Because as I said earlier, our cost per student in 2009 was $11,000 and change. It's now over $15,000 per student.
Right, $4,000 more.
So you think, and I agree with you. I think that, and we also had our reduction, actually, the M was MBR.
MBR.
Minimum Budget Requirement.
Right.
That was also on the table with the State Board of Education for a review and most likely a reduction. So that would have also accommodated the issues of reducing our per pupil costs.
Right.
Which I see you're on that same track. And I like that because it's my style of thinking as well.
There has to be a definition.
But I like the way you're going about the investigation. You wanna see it firsthand. You wanna look at, you wanna look at the physical properties and see what it is. I like that idea.
Like Liz mentioned, we should have some kind of a line item to explain why it costs $15,000 per student versus $8,000 per student in Torrington and similar other school districts. We're like 100% higher. And that has to be, has to be answered and explained.
There's a reason for it.
Right, definitely.
I think you're touching on the reasons, but you want the proof.
Yes, the proof is in the pudding.
Well, good.
And I think Mr. Travaglini's going to be the one to supply us with those answers. He's going to find out what it costs. And you keep bringing, you know, you don't wanna focus on the past so much, which is fine. We shouldn't live in the past, but we definitely need it as a learning step.
The past sets an example for how we're gonna proceed from here.
You know, those who don't know history are doomed to repeat it. All the bad stuff. So if we don't know our history and embrace our history and be honest about our history, we can't move forward. So.
And Jerry, you know, you as a potential Board of Selectmen candidate, we can't ever forget that. You always come and host these things.
Yeah, that's right.
And how, are you willing, are you supportive of this process of working with the Board of Education and finding the answers to those reductions and working as the Board of Finance with them to accommodate their needs but also pinching the pennies to make sure we get there in the right way?
Yeah, as you said before, Mick, that the Board of Selectmen is actually the Board of Finance at the same time. And I think, and I'd like to see where the Board of Selectmen actually takes a more, I don't wanna say like a CEO-type approach to not only the town operations, but also to that of the Board of Ed.
I think that's an appropriate term, though.
I think so. And I think, I think the previous Board of Selectmen sessions have not really put enough bite into keeping the finances in control as far as where the money's going and that sort of thing, especially with the Board of Ed. And I think when, if you have the type of people like we have here where they're gonna say, you know what, I wanna be open. Liz can hardly wait to tell the next Board of Selectmen what's going on. And I love that. But that gets to my, and we've talked about this in the past, my whole idea of this openness where you have this free flow of information that's moving between all the different parts. Like, for example, there's a lot of overlap between the Board of Ed and the Selectmen side. I mean, driveways have to be plowed, parking lots have to be plowed. The town can handle both. We can share services like that. We can share resources. There's a lot of things as far, you know, paper supplies or whatever it is. Basically, we have all these compartmentalized type environments, both in Town Hall and in the school district. So how do we get all this moving? How do we get it so that everybody's sharing? We're using a common, you know, a common store for everything. And really, my whole thing is, along with Mayor Bouchard, is this open data. You know, how do we get it so that anybody with a spreadsheet can actually get in there and understand not only the town finances, but be able to download particular pieces from the Board of Ed? And I think that way, as Liz said before, you get the trust. You know, I think, I think one of the saddest things about the previous or the current Board of Ed is that they didn't trust the townspeople to tell them what was going on. It's not a question of us trusting the Board of Ed. They didn't trust us to basically say, here, here's where we're going wrong. Here's where we're having a problem. Can you help us? They didn't do that. And that's all they had to do. And everybody in the town would've said, sure, how do we solve this? What do we have to do instead? They kept it all bottled up and we have the results that we have. Just because they didn't wanna say, hey, we need some help.
So they weren't willing to accept the help.
They weren't willing to do that. But they weren't willing to reach out and say, hey, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, we have some problems. Take a look at our books, hire us. We don't have the money because we've spent it on furniture or whatever. And help us to get, to do an audit. You know, we could've had John go in there and he could've done a nice thorough audit only the IRS would do.
Forensic style.
Forensic style, the way they love to do it. And I think we would've gotten some answers. So I think, I think there's a huge opportunity here that when you have complementary boards, which I hope we will get in the fall, is that you have this constant back and forth. And I'd like to see the Board of Ed people actually show up at the Selectmen meetings.
Right.
And be able to talk. And also, the Selectmen come in and say, and sit in on the Board. I know we sort of do that now, but it's not a formalized, it's not like, you know, a mainline feature. Just to get everybody, so that we know, and I keep on talking about this, this concept of shared consciousness, you know, in town. And that's one of the things I'm trying to get going here is that everybody knows instinctively what's happening in any town.
I've unleashed a tiger.
You have. It's a flood.
That's right.
But it's all, it's all good. And I like that thought. And as, just one interruption. If there's callers out there that wanna call and have any questions for any of the candidates here, please call 860-238-7518. And then I'm just gonna put the leash on the tiger a little bit.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna change gears here because one of the things that I find very exciting about this Board of Ed race is that for the first time, we don't have to talk about finances in terms of, you know, what it costs to do the town, what it costs to do the various education pieces. I know the Democrats like to use, we don't have enough money to do this. Well, we can't talk about this because we don't have enough money. Or, you know, it's always a cost. There's always some kind of dollar amount. You really can't have an honest discussion about where the schools are going. And I wanted to touch base on something that a lot of parents and town residents are not really familiar with. They hear about this Common Core being talked about. And it's this kind of this nebulous thing that people hear about it, but they don't really know what it is. And so, you know, I just wanted to bring that up. And I know Liz has been involved in studying what's going on with Common Core. And I just wanted to touch base on that.
I have. We're going on a little over two years now of doing research and attending talks and just all kinds of information. There's, there gets to be a point where there's too much information. And a lot of it gets muddied and there's a lot of misconception and people just don't understand. There's a lot of confusion. Common Core is a standard, okay? Separate from a curriculum. What is agitating a lot of people that are seriously opposed to the Common Core standards is they have curriculum that's aligned. is they have curriculum that's aligned to meet Common Core standards. And in that, there's questionable teachings, age appropriation, you know, whether it's age appropriate, whether it's psychologically appropriate for children. So I think that's where the confusion between curriculum and Common Core comes into play. Not a big fan of Common Core myself, only because, I don't know what it was called before, No Child Left Behind. But as soon as we started with testing to meet standards, the kids have not improved. If anything, all the testing that is being done, the kids are doing worse on these tests. There's a lot of--
Just our kids or you're talking nationally?
General, nationally. We just got the results from the SBAK. That's the, the Common Core aligned test, you know, the smarter balance access, you know, smarter balance testing that they did recently. There's no, what is the standard? You know, it's very hard to find the information. They're saying, they're saying that, you know, a lot of people are very concerned over the amount of testing and what is it being measured against?
We're spending a lot of time testing our kids, but not educating them.
We're testing them and testing them and testing them. And, you know, people, you know, certain people just love their data. Data, data, data. It's all they want to know is, "Give me, give me data, give me data, give me data."
The tiger over here.
They're collecting so much data from these children. They're collecting the data when they're being tested.
Yeah, we have a caller.
We've got a caller.
Liz, hold that thought.
Okay.
And we're going to go to the caller.
Go ahead, caller.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm a new resident here in town. I'm here a couple of years and just watching you guys talk. It's nice hearing some new ideas. But I've heard the other candidates in different places and frankly, I'm a little underwhelmed. What I'd like to know from you guys is what you can do differently and why I should vote for you in the upcoming election.
Is that directed at the Board of Ed or the Town, the Board of Selectmen candidate? I'm just kidding. What do you guys?
Thank you, caller.
Thanks.
You should vote, I'm sorry, what, what would I do differently?
He's saying he's underwhelmed with the Democrat offering.
Oh, okay.
And he wants to be excited by, by us. He likes what he's hearing so far.
Well, I'm a mom. I'm a mother. I want what's best for my child and everyone else's child. I want information. I want to know, caller, what everybody else knows that they don't want to tell me. I'm going to ask and I'm going to ask and I'm going to ask. I want yes or no questions. I deal with numbers. I don't want a wishy-washy, "Well, if you look at it this way, no." I want an answer. Yes or no? Very simple. I ask a very simple question. What color are you wearing? Well, it could be beige or, you know, you might want to call, you know, that type of stuff.
So it would be fair to say, Liz, that you don't like to be patronized?
Not at all. Not at all. You ask me a question, I'm giving you an answer. I'm not going to promise, caller, that you're going to like my answer, but you're going to get an answer. It's going to be a truthful answer to the best of my ability with the knowledge I have. And, and if I don't know, I will tell you I don't know. But I will get back to you with an answer.
John, what about you?
My answer would be very simple. The Board of Education has been controlled in the town of Winston for at least 10 years. And just seeing the mess and the situation we're in, if I was in your shoes or anyone else's shoes, I would try to give the other party a chance, the Republicans a chance. I'm sure that if we're going to be in charge or if we get elected, we're going to do a much better job. And hopefully, we'll never end up in this type of a situation where we have to have the state of Connecticut come in and to show us how to run our schools and our town. It's a shame, it's time for a change, finally.
Great. Sounds good.
Jerry, I'll just, you as a selectman candidate, to me, as running for the Board of Selectmen, the most important part of being a selectman is being on that Board of Finance. That is, to me, the most important part of your duties to the community when you take office. And you've touched kind of with me on a few of the data things that you were thinking of initiating. And maybe you'd like to let the folks out there know what, what your thinking would be and how to communicate from the Board of Finance to the Board of Education. How would you do that? How would you, how would you structure this?
Well, actually, even before you go there, Mick, it's really a question, and getting back to the CEO characteristic of the, of the Board of Selectmen, is that in, in dealing with the new town manager that will become now that Dale Martin is leaving for warmer climes--
Good time of the year, anyway.
Yeah, he picked a good time to, to go for that. The real thing here is that, and we talked about this in the past, is that the, the town manager actually acts as a chief operating officer. And I think one of the issues that, that the current Board of Selectmen has failed to do is basically define what the role, what the responsibilities are for that town manager and to pass resolutions at the town meetings. To basically say, "Town manager, here's what we want. Go off and do it. You have a certain amount of time. And then come back to us with the results. And let us know what it costs." And also be able to use that to make sure that the wheels of government actually roll more smoothly instead of the grinding that we have right now. So I think you take that and this whole concept of the town, of the Board of Selectmen becoming activist type, an activist-type board, whether it's with the Town Hall or it's with the Board of Education. We really can't do too much with the Board of Education because the, the state of Connecticut actually isn't in control of that. But we can provide advice. We can say, "You know what? Now that you're giving us line item information, here's how it can jive with what we're doing on the side." One of the problems you've had is that because of a lack of communication between the two boards--
Impossible to assemble a budget.
Yeah, you can't assemble a budget, whether it's on the Ed side or it's on the town side. And this past time, they were waiting forever for the Board of Ed numbers to come in, which weren't even correct. And they kept on changing it all the way up until we had the vote. Literally, right before we had the vote on the last budget. So that's the type of thing, Mick, that I'm going to basically push. And I know, working with, with these two here, is that by having that shared, you know, consciousness, that shared knowledge about what's going on, even the townspeople will know what's going on.
Exactly.
And so that we're all--
Open government.
Yeah, so we have--
Transparency.
That's right. Open, and I'm, you know, I'm a big fan of open data. So as, as long as we can make it available, really beef up the website, you know, so we know what's going on. Not just that there's town meetings, but, you know, when are potholes being filled? What particular street? You know, everybody wants, I want to be able to submit that I'm having a problem on my road and be able to track what's happening. Or there's a problem with the school district, I want to know what's going on. So I think that's the type of thing that I think we're all in agreement here. And I think even the whole Republican team wants to head that way. So I see by the clock that we have about a minute left and it always goes by fast. What I'd like to do is have another meeting with you guys and talk about Common Core because we really didn't have enough time to do that, Liz.
That is so involved.
And that's important. And it's so involved. And I want to make sure that our people out who are viewing really understand that. So I asked both of you, would you be willing to come back on a future show before the election?
Yes, I would.
All right, great. Any final words from our candidates?
My final words would be, thank you for watching tonight. And try to give us a chance on November 3rd.